Admit folks as they continue to show up.
Will do.
Okay. Time's 7:31. I will call this April 6th meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. I'm meeting everyone and I will ask you to please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could move to our roll call.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Segal Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Finer?
I see him.
I see him. Mr. McCann?
I meant here, sorry.
That's okay.
I was off mute. I was on mute to say I was here. Anyway.
We see you. Mr. McCann was not here?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Curtin?
Here.
And Mr. Bria, thank you.
Here. All right, with five members present, that constitutes a quorum. And let's make a note in the record, I just admitted Ms. Thompson to the meeting, so that makes six.
Thank you.
By Mayor Harding this evening. Moving on to our first item is community announcements. This would be an opportunity for any member of council or the public to share an item for the pub, that's for the good of the community. And I will begin simply by repeating news that most of you already heard, but that is that vaccine eligibility is opening up to the general public. I believe that begins not next week, possibly the following week, the 19th. I would encourage anyone who has not already done so to register through the county website, buckscounty.org. That doesn't get you your appointment, but it gets you in line for your appointment. And certainly if you have been offered means of getting vaccinated through some other route, you're free to go ahead. It won't interfere with the county registration system, but we just encourage everyone to avail themselves of that opportunity if they wish to do so. All right, do we have other items for community announcements? And I will start with anything from council.
Yes, I would just like to encourage everyone to register for Parks and Recs races. So they have the Memorial Mile again on Memorial Day weekend, and a week later they have a 5K. You can walk or run them, so I think all seven of us and the mayor should be able to to do that even after a year locked in our home. So hopefully we can see full support. I'll post the links in the chat if any members of the public would like to register as well.
Great. Thank you. We have any other items for community announcements from council? Right here, none. We'll make the same offer to members of the public. Any items for community announcement? All right, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next up is public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Members of the public are asked to please state their name and address for the record and note that public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom if you wish to be acknowledged. And if you have trouble with that and your video is on, a good old wave will probably catch someone's attention. All right, first up, I see Ms. Perlmutter. Unmute yourself and your three minutes begins.
Thank you. Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College Avenue. Councilman Bria, in previous meetings when you did not like what I had to say, you silenced me by muting my microphone, ignoring my raised hand, and even removing me from one of the meetings. I'll certainly abide by the three-minute time limit, but I would like to be heard for my three minutes. In addition to these public comments, I do have questions on a number of issues on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to be heard on those because this is a public meeting and it's my right as a Yardley Borough resident. I would like to bring to council's attention several code enforcement zoning and public safety issues. There is almost not one street in Yardley Borough that does not have obvious code enforcement or zoning violations, some of which are public safety hazards. Since I'm limited to three minutes, I'm going to focus on South Main Street between Afton and College Avenue, which is the heart of Yardley's historic district. For several years, I've come before council and pointed out a number of code violations in Yardley. In fact, two years ago, I pointed out the overflowing dumpsters that are required to be enclosed. There's still many on South Main Street. Just one example is there's three of them next to the Ice House. Since the code was never enforced, and it's not only an obvious eyesore, but now there's a rat infestation right near where children line up to get their ice cream cones. Regarding zoning, as you're aware, recently several residents have applied to the zoning hearing board to run sewer lines to their barns, to add sinks bathrooms or kitchens to convert their barns into living spaces. They went through the expensive process of a zoning board hearing and, to my knowledge, were all denied. Last week, right on Main Street, two doors from the offices of the manager, police, and code enforcement official, in the guise of broken pipes, the property owners used a backhoe to run new sewer pipes from Main Street all the way to their barn on Canal Street. They did this without going to a zoning hearing to obtain a variance, without contacting the sewer authority for permission, and without contacting Pennsylvania One Call to mark the utility lines. This resulted in them cutting an underground electrical conduit, causing all the streetlights on Main Street between Afton and College Avenues to go out. Since they regularly do this work on weekends, the borough had to call an electric company to work double time to fix the problem. Furthermore, as if that wasn't enough damage, the property owner also decided without notification to dig up the historic brick walkway that belongs to the property next door. Without notification to the business owners whose customers and tenants have to use the walkway to get from the parking lot to their offices, they just decided to destroy and cut the walkway in half, which they decided is now their property. Code enforcement and the manager were informed of this and did nothing to stop it. This is not the first time. They did this because they got away with it last year using the exact same excuse of a broken pipe to run illegal sewer hookups next to my property. And without notification from the borough, they removed my historic fence, stone wall, and cut down memorial trees while I was out of town. Not only was I not notified, but
Please.
Wrapping up, as fast as I can. An RTK revealed that you, Mr. Bria, and the borough manager facilitated this vandalism by giving unauthorized permission. When did it become okay in Yardley Borough to destroy people's property? Destroying historic walkways, fences, stone walls, and memorial trees is not just criminal. It causes irreparable harm. They cannot be replaced. Furthermore, it's not fair that most business owners follow all the rules, hire architects, engineers, go through zoning, and others are not required to meet any of the borough regulations, and in fact are allowed to do construction, convert historic buildings without blueprints, permits, with the full knowledge and consent of the manager, zoning, building, and code enforcement officers, who the manager is supposed to be supervising. Other residents do not have the protection.
We're now at four minutes, so I'm going to ask you to conclude your public.
Okay, I just have one more paragraph. Thank you. Other residents do not have the protection of borough officials and are penalized. One property on Delaware Avenue ran sewer lines and they were sewer authority made them cut the line. Basically, Councilman Bria, what is it going to take before you clean house? Does a child have to get bitten by a rat while waiting in line for ice cream? What if they hit a gas line instead of an electric line and blew up half the block?
Thank you, Dr. Perlmutter. In regards to the direct accusation that I authorized the destruction of your property, I quite simply want to respond that I have absolutely no idea what you are talking about.
I have it in writing.
We go through this all the time.
And you don't take it well because I have it in writing.
There, you believe that there is wrongdoing. I am quite confident that our staff follows the rules, follows the regulations, and treats everyone fairly. And that's all I have to say about it. Is there any other public comment this evening? All right, I don't see any, so we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on. Next, item six, which is consideration of the consent agenda. There are a few changes since the printed agenda went out. First is that under item C, certificate of appropriateness 21-9 for 55 East Afton Avenue is being removed from tonight's agenda. That will be considered at the next meeting. I generally leave this portion off by asking if anyone would like two items to be removed or any items to be removed and considered separately. I'm going to be proactive about that. And tonight we will consider certificate of appropriateness 21-05. That's for 35 South Main Street. We'll consider that item separately. And I'm also going to have us consider the event permit for Harvest Day separately, just to be clear on some of the exceptions in that application. So other than those two are there items council would like to be considered separate from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Which I normally read off what that includes, so let me do that for the record now, is the approval of the minutes from the March 16th meeting. Bills list dated for April 1st. Some certificates of appropriateness, one at 62 South Main Street, and another one 21-10 for 45 East Afton Avenue. The event permit for the Yardley Memorial Day parade and the event permit for Yardley Walk to Run. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Are any questions or comments from council on the consent agenda? Any comments or questions from the public? I see you again, Ms. Perlmutter. Go ahead.
Yes, in reference to the bills list, regarding check number 936 to Armor &amp; Sons Electric for invoice number 910021811, which was drawn on the streetlight fund, is the check payment for the cost to fix the broken electric conduit that caused the streetlights to go out? That was run over by a backhoe without calling Pennsylvania One Call? And if yes, why is the borough paying that bill and not the person responsible for the damage?
I'll defer to Paula. Do you have the specifics on that invoice?
It is for a repaired streetlight, is not for that property, and that property did call PA One Call.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries 6 to 0. I'm going to move us on next to the Yardley Harvest Day event permit. I think that should be pretty quick, and I know that last item, there were some folks here to discuss. Any of the Yardley Harvest Day event permit. I just wanted to note that there were two requests in that application that our staff has recommended that the borough not fully comply with or not fulfill. So I just wanted to handle the approval separately so that that is clear. Those two items involve the grading of a lot along Canal Street and for the fence removal for the trees over in Fitzgerald Field. So at this time I'll ask, is there a motion to approve the Yardley Harvest Day event permit with the exception of those two items?
So moved.
Second.
My motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Are any questions, discussion, comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public?
David, I just wanted to ask, I don't have the full history of, you know, how we've worked together with, you know, the committees on Harvest Day. These requests out of norm or these services we have provided in the past, I just wanted to get some context from people that maybe have a little more history.
The fences for the trees I know are new because the trees weren't there in the past. And Paula, if you could maybe fill in on what's on Canal Street. I'm not so sure of the background, although I know Wes noted that is a private lot.
On Canal Street, there is two private lots that do have some potholes in on the sides. And unless council approves, they're private property, so we cannot pay to have them regraded and restoned. I think what they did in the past is actually just went out and maybe raked some of the stone. Rich, I think if you're correct, right?
That's all we were asking for.
Yeah, and then just this way, there wasn't a trip hazard, but it is private property, so that would need approval from council.
I would just note that Ken Smith has done that for like the past four or five events. There's nothing added, you know, it's just raking what's there. It's no big deal. I mean, with the fencing, it's just two segments that we want to remove. We can put it back at the end of the day. But the ones that are closest to Bell Avenue, we cannot do, we can't utilize that area with those fence segments there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wayne. Would any member of council like to make an amendment to the motion?
Can, can you explain what can't be done with the fence there, just so we can understand?
We can't. We either have to put, there's a couple of things that we can do in those corners, the face short bell. But anything that we put there won't fit all the way because those fence segments take out, they create a barrier. Now, we will protect the trees, we'll put cones around it, but the width of the fence is the problem in those two locations. The other ones are fine. They won't get in our way.
And Wes, can you speak to why that, we asked to pull that out? Or Paula, whoever made that note?
I made the note, ma'am, and it was just based on the fact that the Shade Tree Commission desired the fences there to protect the trees. We've made an investment, it's a borough asset. I'm just looking to protect our assets.
I spoke to the gentleman from Orchard Hill, and I forget his name, who's on the Shade Tree Commission, and he said that those fencings were never meant to be permanent. And I told him what we want to do with those two segments, and, you know, he didn't oppose it.
So can we perhaps move forward with that removed for now and work together to come up with a cost-effective way that will take up less space during Harvest Day weekend to protect the trees? I mean, they're not established yet, so they're, the fences are probably still.
But they only, they only protect them on one side. They'd be better protected if you put cones all around them.
All right, for purposes tonight, we have a motion, we have a second on the table. I'll ask again for formality, if any member of council would like to amend that. Certainly with the thought in mind that we can always revisit this up to the time of the event.
Sure.
And I just throw out the idea, I don't know if cones, I mean, you guys know more than I do about this, but I just think like cones get moved, or what about like just hammering in some stakes and putting some sort of like temporary protective, you know, something that's like obvious that people shouldn't pull out?
We can do that as well.
But yeah. I'm sure it could be figured out.
My preference would still be that we have a plan, we have buy-in from Shade Tree and the borough, and we approve this part tonight and then handle the fence and maybe whatever alternative plan we've come up with, with all approvals necessary at our next meeting.
Um, for me, I'm okay with that. I would say I think we should find a way to figure out how to move the fence, but I agree, that's a good plan to figure this out.
All right. Is there further comment on the Harvest Day event permit?
The one thing I would stress, and as the event gets closer, I'll speak with Wes and the chief about it, but the traffic flow at the end of the day, we have got to agree on the direction. The past two events, there was confusion.
Yeah, I planned to speak to you on that and also about having staff there until about seven o'clock because what we get is, and we'll talk as we get closer, but we have stragglers for three and four hours after the event. And we'll need to, we'll need some help with that.
You got it. We don't want them there either.
All right, sounds good. Unless there is any further comment, I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the event permit for Yardley Harvest Day, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
None carry 6 to 0. Thank you. All right, and our final item on the consent agenda is the certificate of appropriateness 21-05 for 35 South Main Street. The business there is La La Lobster. And this certificate is for an awning, phone booth, and sign. And also we'll open up, is there a motion from council regarding the certificate of appropriateness? Only once.
Is the, is the packet out of order? I'm not seeing it.
He's, I think the hard meeting was after the agenda went out, so I believe it came in an email Monday.
There's two, there's, yeah, the first one was in the, our packet, then there's a separate hard right up that came separately. So there's two things on it.
Got it, thanks.
All right, so again, is there a motion regarding certificate of appropriateness 21-05?
So moved.
Do we hear a second? Only once.
Second.
Okay, can I hear a second from Ms. Thompson? All right, motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Now we will move to discussion. Let's begin with council. Do you have any discussion comments, questions perhaps on the certificate of appropriateness? All right, seeing none, we'll move.
I think I want, I'm going to, I'm going to start us out. I think there's a lot of tension on this, and I listened to or watched the hard meeting. And it's a couple of things I just want to share here to kind of get the discussion going maybe, and sort of share where I'm at and get other people's input on this. But first of all, I appreciate that the, the, the Rabinas, is that how you pronounce your name? Are here and that they've opened, you know, that they've invested in Yardley and that they've done well in a pandemic, which in that, this line of business, which is really impressive. And I think it's really exciting that a business can come here in Yardley and open up and do so well that they expand to other places. Says a lot about Yardley. I think I hear a lot of concern in the community about the blue color, which is not on these, the, what we're approving tonight. But I think it's something that needs to be addressed because it somehow ties into it. And I think that my sense is that it's something that can be figured out. I went and looked at it, and I was sure that the house in the back, which used to be, well, they both were red, but the house in back that was red and recently painted blue, that more of it was painted in blue than the amount that was red. But then I looked at an old picture of when it was red, and now when it's blue, and I see the same things that were red are now blue. So why does it look like that? Because we're not used to seeing that shade in that area. And so something is sticking out because a lot of people are concerned about it. And I think, I want to encourage us to figure out a solution with the business owners that works for everyone to deal with that. Because I think from listening to the tone at the hard meeting, I think that's possible, and the business owners seem like reasonable people. I don't think that they want to be, you know, at odds with people in the community for that reason. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think this is probably a good way to, or good time to further comment on the issue of color, which I know that several folks have come here to discuss. And just by way of some background on this, Harb has never in Yardley Borough enforced color choices when it comes to changes in the historic district. It is something that, under the state law, a Harb could enforce. So in other communities, that may be the case, but our historic ordinance here in Yardley Borough leaves out color. And I believe that was an intentional choice at the time that ordinance was passed. And further, because we have never enforced on the issue of color before, it would open up a can of worms to do so now for this one case. So all of that has to be taken into account when the borough makes these sort of decisions, right? If we are enforcing sometimes, but not other times, that is where we can assume some liability, and that is something we want to avoid. And then I guess I see Bucky and Andrew here, if you have anything to add to that. I know we've had some discussions about this as well.
Yeah, I can let Andrew comment as well, but I think I agree with, you know, your comments, council president. I mean, you know, the ordinance can always be amended if that's something that the council would like to address going forward. But I think you're right. I think trying to essentially make a 180 U-turn on that issue in one specific case is really probably not legally defensible.
Yeah, and I would just third that. The ordinance doesn't expressly provide for paint color, and it's never been interpreted to include paint color as a consideration. So we can't selectively enforce it today on one property.
Thank you both. All right, do we have any further comments from council on this issue before I open up to the public?
I just want to, Rick, can I just respond to what you, so I understand that issue, and I think that that's an issue we have to look at. And I think I'm trying to look at it from both, from both sides. The reason that there hasn't been previous, this hasn't come up, is because this is an more extreme version of paint. So therefore, you could say it's paint, but it's also maybe, you could also say it's part of the sign because it's part of the brand and part of the color, you know, there are a lot of ways of looking at it. But I'm thinking, you know, let's just be reasonable people and not get into whether or not this is violation or it's enforceable. Let's just talk to the business owner. They seem like reasonable people and figure out, can this be mitigated in some way? Maybe they should go back to Harb, get suggestions. I understand there's potential cost involved, maybe that can be figured out. And then for the future, that we look at what needs to be done to create more clarity around this issue so it doesn't happen again, because the, you know, they were told correctly, so from my understanding that there was no issue with paint, so they just went ahead and did what made sense to them. So, you know, it's under, nobody has any ill intentions here, I don't think. And I think we should work it out, not from a legal perspective, just from a reasonable people perspective in the community.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, to echo what you said, David, I think that, you know, the reason why we're going to have public comment on this item is not for what we're voting on, it's for the color. So, Mr. Rabina, you're going to continue to have people checking every line of the borough code anytime you submit anything. So I do think we need to have a conversation about this and how we move forward as a community.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? All right, hearing none, we'll go over to the public. And Mr. Bernie, I saw your hand first.
I should be off mute now?
Yeah.
So, so I've got two things. I think what I heard before was, was correct, or my, my interpretation is, nobody had to look at color because it was usually pretty consistent with trying to you know, go through Harb, and although Harb doesn't actually vote on color, there is always discussion on color prior to them recommending or not recommending to council any of their, anything under them. So even though color is not under under their purview, under our ordinance, it's always a discussion. And there's always an implication. Um, the difference here was there was no no requirement because there were no nails and, you know, no, no nails and hammers being used to adjust anything. So you could just change it on your own. Um, the problem with that is that you could go to Harb, get everything approved. Color could be discussed. And I've got the building next to it and I could paint it bright orange. Um, and it would be fine, but after the fact. So i- it's the extreme that, that's causing it, causing the debate. Um, because it doesn't fit uh, in, in any Pennsylvania historic community. Um, so it stands out. And it stands out loud and the, the front building um, was not as, um, you know, jump in your face and the back building with the roof. Um, and, and yes, it's everything that was red was painted, but red fit because red fit with any barn type structure within Pennsylvania. Um, so you, council can take that and, and do what they want with it, but um, you, if, if this is okay and there's no structure within Harb um, to, to manage it, uh, there's yeah, you know, i- it's, it could make the historic district not historic and it's been, you know, then you should just reevaluate whether Harb actually makes sense. Um, the, the individual items that are in the certificate of appropriateness. Um, you know, the the phone booth in particular, um, it was discussed that it's nostalgic, but it's nostalgic for you know, the fifties or the thirties through the fifties in London, but not anywhere uh, on Main Street and Yardley. And so I, I'd argue that that's a prop of sorts. And again, that would be a problem with any other business that wanted to just um, basically put extra signage out, extra attention out in front of their business on Main Street. So um, you know, the, the actual sign is very large and right on the property line or, you know, a foot off the property line. So um, if it had to go through approval now, there's no way it would, would pass. Um, so, uh, but, but, you know, the awning is rational and reasonable. The phone booth is a prop. And if it was proposed by itself prior to it being there, my belief is Harb would have said absolutely not, no matter where it was in view of the road. Um, but pulling all these things together, I'm not sure you can pull them apart as council, but um, pulling them all together kind of muddies the water as well. So that's all my comments.
Thank you. Uh, continuing with public comment, I saw Ms. Pearl Mutter next. Unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, going back to code enforcement, there is an ordinance that directly corresponds to the sign. Um, since you have two lawyers here again, in section twenty-seven dash three-two-two of the Yardley Borough Code of Ordinances, um, the sign quote should be situated where it neither blocks nor obscures important architectural features. The size of the sign face should be eight to ten square feet. The height of the sign face should not exceed seven feet and the upright supporting the sign should not exceed nine feet. This sign violates every one of those criteria. Um, for inexplicable reasons, members of Harb um, decided to go along with this. Um, not everyone, in fact, most you have a problem with Harb where you barely have a quorum because members don't show up. Um, so again, you just said earlier that you equally enforce code enforcement. Um, I think this sign needs to follow the rules that are in the ordinance. It's a legal issue and the council has the ability to do that. Um, and I would like to comment on the color. I know it's not up um, right now, but I think you need to understand that Yardley Borough can lose its status as a historic borough by the state. Um, so I understand it's not this person's fault. They were not told they, anything as usual. Some people, you know, there's no direction, but there are other solutions. Um, people can raise money. I think people in this town will be willing to raise money to change that color. It doesn't always have to be legal covering your butt with two lawyers here. Um, there are solutions like you already suggested, but the sign should follow the ordinance just like everything else should follow the ordinance, or why do we even have them? Thanks.
Thank you. And next hand I saw was Sukkuk.
Yeah, Roger, Roger and Sukkuk, one oh four North Main Street. You know, we're very grateful to have uh, this new business in town and very happy they're being successful. The color may be a shock to some people at first. I like to think of bright colors on buildings and I think of the painted ladies uh, uh, Victorian homes in San Francisco and it's very attractive. I, I see no problem with it and, and I wish this business owner the best of luck. The best thing we can do is not stand in the way of, of these business owners trying to do what they must do. The um, the phone booth may be a little out of place. It's a great place to hide out if you're trying to wait for your food while the weather's cold outside. Um, I have no objection to it.
Thank you. Uh, next hand I saw was Jerry Taylor.
Two, two things. One, you know, we talked about the phone booth and the applicant agreed to move it to the back building. So it's really out of the way and that's part of the uh, certificate of appropriateness. The um, sign and Harb will be looking at, we've been asked to update our guidelines and we are negligent. We should have really created more guidelines other than the side sign guidelines. So we're going to start working on those, you know, including windows and siding and everything else and, and we'll include uh, comments on color. Uh, for the sign, and this was, uh, I think the reason we went along with the size and the height of the sign was because it's an existing sign. And what Dawn was quoting was the sign guidelines. So I voted against that. I dissented on the sign because I think we have a real problem with huge signs in the borough and you cannot see the actual uh, building. And I have one shot. When you look uh, from South Main Street going north, you can't see the building from the sign. And so my take for dissenting for that one was at some point council has to, and council has to really start getting these signs to be a legitimate size. And this one is really egregious because it's sixteen square foot and the building's probably sixteen foot wide, which is how the sign ordinance reads. So my take on that is just, I think council, if they wanted to take a stand and maybe the solicitors and all that would have an objection, but just say, hey, enforce the uh, sign design guidelines as proposed, you know, the, the Harb sign design guidelines as opposed to the actual ordinance. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, I see a hand from David Applebaum.
Good evening, everybody. Like to thank everyone, oh, David Applebaum, thirty-nine Breeze Drive. Uh, I'm the president of Experience Yardley. And um, first I want to thank everyone who came before me. Uh, your uh, comments are uh, well thought out. Uh, but as president of Experience Yardley, uh, one of the mandates of our organization is to help uh, build, or excuse me, increase economic impact. And um, I've known Fred and his wife for uh, the months that they've been in business and um, I really appreciate their um, um, them coming into town and uh, and building this business uh, right in the middle of a pandemic. And just to prove how successful they are, I was down in Cape May this weekend and I saw the uh, new Cape May facility. So uh, good luck on that, Fred. Uh, the point I wanted to make is that Experience Yardley works closely with a lot of other Chamber of Commerces, uh, visit Bucks County, other organizations that are trying to build uh, these small towns on the river as destination towns. And um, you can argue, or Harb can argue and I, and, and Jerry, I, I truly appreciate the work that Harb, you and Harb are doing. Uh, but maybe we need to um, consider that uh, history is something that continues. And we're making history right now. We're living through history right now with this pandemic. And I like to um, you know, uh, as, as a representative of Experience Yardley to work with Fred um, personally, uh, to talk about some of these issues that uh, have been um, spoken about tonight and maybe people have made complaints and and perhaps come up with a uh, solution that would be amenable to everybody. But more importantly, um, I think we have to understand that we have to do what's good for the community and without our businesses, and I'm pro-business, uh, that we would not have, we, we would not have the town that we have today. Uh, when I moved here eleven years ago, that was the beginning of what I considered a Renaissance and, and culminating with La La Lobster, which I, by the way, I am a frequent uh, customer. So um, I just want to say that personally, I'd like to uh, extend an invitation to Fred to work with you if that's okay. And um, if you need a liaison, um, I'd be able to uh, help you with that. But that's my take on it. Um, I think that um, there's plenty of history to still be made in this town and um, I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I see a hand from Susan Taylor.
An historic district and historic town is compatible with economic development and business improvement. So to say that something that is incompatible with the rest of the town will hurt the business is not true. I, I have a real problem with that concept. Um, all you have to do is read a whole lot about historic preservation and you'll find that the charm, the ambiance of a town enhances business. Um, not. And I also believe in the concept of playing well with others. And in this case, I think it's necessary to play well with others. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands, but with any, uh, the, Kim Kane, go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you. I, I sent a, a PowerPoint presentation in to um, the borough office. I'm not sure if Paul had a chance to, to get that uh, queued up or not.
Jim, I did not see it. I didn't receive it. When did you send it?
Um, the, the PowerPoint presentation that I, that I pulled together, basically I took a picture of twelve businesses right in the heart of the borough and every single one of those businesses was expressing their brand effectively on the inside of their businesses. Protect the historic nature of our borough. And I think when people come to Yardley Borough, they really appreciate the integrity that we have as business owners of maintaining a little bit of the history. Uh, I had, uh, I had a beer with uh, with Fred, uh, the owner of La La Lobster a few weeks ago, and I kind of expressed some of the concerns I had. And he, he basically, and Fred, you're, you're on the, I think you're on the line here, so just jump in. He said, Jim, I'm just expressing my brand. And I challenged him. I said, Fred, you're expressing your brand, but you're doing it on the outside. Every single business owner in this borough expresses their brand on the inside of the building. They have a sign, sure, they might have a table or an umbrella, but we're not all putting out lighthouses, red phone booths, red trash cans, lobster pots um, to draw attention to our businesses on the outside. Uh, express your brand on the inside. And I told him I was inside your shop and it's really cute on the inside. But when you spill your brand identification to the outside of the building, your base, and, and the borough allows that, they're basically given license to every single other business to go out and express their brand on the outside in this beautiful historic district. Now, I would never do this, but maybe I'll get a big red vault and put it right out in front of my business. And maybe I'll change my sign to a big beer, like he's got a lobster. I'll just put a big beer sign out front. And maybe I can rig it up so that beer pitcher pours into a glass. That would really draw a lot of attention. If the, if the intent is to maintain the integrity of the borough, I would never do that. Right? I just think as, as a community here and as responsible business leaders, we need to draw this line very carefully. Because if we allow phone booths and lighthouses and lobster pots and big, big red trash cans outside of our businesses in the borough, if we allow that for one business, how does the, how does the council in any way, shape or form prevent another business owner a year from now, when we've got La La Shrimp opening up and they want to put a big giant shrimp sign out front and they want to put a pink purple elephant? How do we stop that? I, I really think that we need to challenge ourselves to say, express your brands as business owners on the inside. Sure, have a nice provocative sign. You want to paint your, your, your building a provocative color and the, and the borough allows that, that's great. But we've got to draw the line with putting so many accoutrements. It's a four hundred square foot building, but we've got red trash cans, we've got red um, phone booths, we've got a, um, we've got a, a lighthouse and a lobster pot. I, I challenge you, that's more than any other business has collectively across the, the twelve or fifteen that I photographed for this meeting. That, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this issue? All right, I don't see any. Uh, before I return and call the question, uh, I'm going to offer comment myself, which actually I see Mr. Rabina has your hand up. So why don't you go ahead?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to wait and let everybody have their say. I, I didn't want to interrupt anybody. So let me first say, uh, thank you uh, to everybody in the borough. Uh, I am very happy to be here. Uh, my wife is ecstatic here. Uh, unfortunately, my wife uh, isn't here in this meeting. She's tending to our daughter, but uh, she didn't want to be here like she was in the uh, the hard meeting. Um, I'm going to be selective with some of the things that I'll respond to. Um, because I think uh, the thing that we should address first and foremost is um, and Wes or Paula can answer this. Currently, we do not have any violations, correct?
I am unaware of any violations today.
Okay, so just, just so we're all in the same thing, that uh, La La Lobster does not have any violation. Um, everyone has their different uh, opinion, uh, like Jim has his and he can run his business how he wants. Uh, I will not critique him as he has critiqued the Nicole's business. But with this small forum that is voicing a lot of concern, we have hundreds. If, if, I would say close to a thousand or more people that feel it's quite the opposite. Um, I, I think that the amount of response that we have received is clearly indicative to our business. Uh, we are bringing business to the borough. Uh, we are doing it in what we feel is the right way. And what I mean by that is I met with Jerry prior to I met with Jerry prior to painting the building. I got the information. Nicole picked the color, developed the brand, we moved forward. Yardley embraced us. They are happy with the concept. They are happy with the product. And I think that's very clear. All you have to do is Google it and see the reviews. Such a cute place. The food is good. It goes on and on and on. It started here. La La's original is Yardley Borough. That can never change. And because of that success, the brand has grown very quickly. As you know, it has expanded. Because of this quick response, we have trademarked our brand. We have multiple units in development. We have uniforms and colors and buildings. It's, it's all, it's not just a small little building. And Jerry, the one thing I did want to point out to you is that
Dean, if you could just give about 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Sure. The, the one point that you made about the square footage, I think that's incorrect because there's two buildings there. There's a collective square footage of 50 feet of frontage. Because if everyone remembers, that sign said Red House and Red House was the back building. So now we are both buildings. I, I don't, I don't know how that actually works out. So I, I don't want to be argumentative. I have had conversations with Paula. I have even had a conversation today with Wes. I've had conversations with Scott. I've had my neighbor, I've had conversations with John Simone, my other neighbor. All about beautification, making sure we're compliant, making sure that everybody's happy. So I, I am shocked, as Nicole mentioned in the Hart meeting, that people are actually saying bad things about it because all we hear are positive. So, so I'll leave on that note. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Council President, is it, would it be okay to ask a few questions of Mr. Ravina since he's here?
Yes, but let's let's keep them to the items that are on the certificate of appropriateness itself and not some of these discussion items that fall outside that vote.
Well, it's all interconnected to me. I don't know if I can separate it.
Well, so to be clear, in regards to the awning, the phone booth or the sign, I would say yes. If it's not, I think this is a conversation that we probably need to continue in another forum.
The thing is that we're voting on these three things and I do have a question regarding one of those things specifically. But these three things represent in aggregate decisions that are made that are connected to things that have been done. So it's, that's why there is a, I mean, I think I can ask this question very quickly. It's not I just want to get a sense. Thank you. Mr. Ravina, the, you know, I think there are a lot of sides to this and like I said, I think that this can be worked out. The main issue that I'm hearing, I agree, not everyone has the issue. Some do, some don't. The main issue is that you have a brand, but Yardley has a brand and Yardley has a historic, a brand of historic, beautiful little town with historic businesses and we need to make those things work together. And I think that you want that for your business too. So I don't think it's at odds. The main question I have regarding the painting is, are you open to working out a solution to that, that back building? Because that seems to be the point where a lot of this came in. Is that that was sort of the straw that broke the camel's back? I think everything else is it's much smaller compared to that. I just want to get your input on that. Who are we working with here?
Sure. So I, I think it's fair to say that we didn't know there was a camel nor a straw. All we hear are good things. So you know, until Jim Kane extended the invitation to have a conversation with me last week, we had no idea that there was a color concern because all we hear are great things. Everyone loves that comes in the color, the feel, the effort of authenticity towards our brand and that product. So I, I think, I think I answered it, but I don't, I don't know that's what you're looking for.
Well, I was looking for a yes or no. It sounds like a no.
I, I don't know how I could change the brand because in essence, that's what you're asking me to. It's like, can you call Starbucks up and say, hey?
No, no, just, yeah, I want to, no, I don't. I think I'm talking about going back to Harb like you did in the discussion you had with them and talking about, well, if I was to mitigate this, maybe have a little less blue. Any ideas how to do that? Okay, it's going to cost this much. Let's figure that out. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the reasonable idea of in good conscience, not from a legal perspective, going back and saying, well, do you have ideas of, you know, because I don't think it would affect your, your brand. I mean, I've, I've been in business and I've had brands also, but you can decide how much color and where you use the color, you know, so I, with respect to your brand, no one's asking you to change the color to red.
Okay, understood. Then to answer your question, would I entertain a conversation with Harb? Absolutely.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, Yuri, I think you were on to something. I mean, my, my like comment, I think, Mr. Ravina, I think you, you hit on this. You know, we do have a Starbucks in town, you know, we do have a CVS in town, right? And I, and I think the facades and the signage of those buildings look different than they do where you to go to a CVS and lower makefield. Right? I, I think that's, you know, not a dramatic, you know, leap of faith for me to make that statement. So I do appreciate your comments about working with, you know, trying to figure something out, you know, from, from my perspective, I'm probably in a place that makes no one happy, right? Surprise, surprise, right? Like I, I think a lot of what Scott and Jim said really resonated with me. I'd say Jerry and Susan's comments as well. But I would also say I, I respect and I have a lot of, you know, admiration for what you've accomplished. I like your product. I like your company. I think it's great that you're here. I wish you an incredible amount of success. And you played by the rules, right? And so I, you know, I, I appreciate you for doing that. And so, you know, for me at least, I'm probably in favor of the certificate of appropriateness, but I do so with reservations and I think the concerns that have been raised to me are very valid. I also like what Yuri said. It's a sliding scale and I'm not sure when it tripped over. But I think for me, when I saw this, when you're, when you opened, I was like, that's awesome, right? And I didn't even think anything other than that looks really cool. And then for some reason, when I saw the back was painted, I was like, oh, that's a lot of blue, man. That's weird, right? And, and for me, it just, it was a place that it tipped over and that's just one person's opinion. But I will say again, I think this has been good discussion and I think this is something we need to discuss as a borough to Jim's point about going forward. At least that's where I'm at on it.
So can I add one more thing?
I'm going to move us along here. We've
I do, and I do have my second question and I'm sorry, but this is related to the three things. I just want to clarify that the sign that we're voting on tonight is because I couldn't quite find it in the Harb meeting. My understanding is the entire frame will be painted white, not blue. I mean, the structure that holds the frame, then the frame is blue, the background is white and the letters are blue in your new logo. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that robust conversation. Before we move to a vote, I'm going to make everyone suffer through my thought on this. And that's simply to say that I think we have uncovered a need to revisit the ordinance that we have in place regarding the historic district. I think Mr. Curtin hit it right on the head when he noted that Mr. Ravina played by the rules. And I've got two very good lawyers here that tell me that is the case. But as council, we are elected to set the rules and we can't do that for buildings that exist already or decisions that have been made in the past, but we can certainly do that going forward. So we heard, we, we heard a lot of feedback from residents, from businesses alike that are centered around the specifics of this ordinance that we have that governs the historic district in Yardley. And I think it's safe to say that's something I want to take a look at as we go forward. I will need help from fellow council members and from members of the community, businesses, residents alike to make that happen in a way that fits this town and works for the businesses and works for the community. So I'm going to choose to make some lemonade out of the lemons we had here and say that I look forward to that process of ironing out those details and making sure that we have an ordinance that is going to maintain the historic character of Yardley for the next 20, 30, 50 years. That being said, I am going to call the question. All those in favor of approving the certificate of appropriateness 21-5 for 35 South Main Street pertaining to an awning, phone booth and sign, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? None. The motion carries 6 to 0.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Before we continue, we've been out of an hour. I just want to check in with council. Does anyone need a two to three minute break before we continue? All right. I don't hear any, so we will keep going. Chief Kelly, your report is next.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'll be brief tonight. I only have one item, which is monthly service statistics for March 2021. In March 2021, the police department responded to 462 calls for service, issued 89 moving traffic citations, we issued two non-traffic criminal citations, investigated five motor vehicle accidents and made two arrests, neither of which was for DUI. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Chief Kelly. Next item tonight is our engineer's report.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. Unfortunately, I have some action items that we do need to so I'm going to be as succinct as possible. So for the general updates, I have three action items that I need decisions from Borough Council on. The first one is in regards to the Buck Creek Watershed Management Plan. ASA has now submitted their third invoice and is asking about payment for the second invoice. We are still in the process of working through reimbursement with the grant. And it's, it's just been a back and forth with documentation. So I was asked to see if Borough would be willing to pay the second invoice, which is for $7,130.89 and then receive reimbursement for it from the grant. So that's something that you guys would need to, to decide and you don't necessarily have to decide tonight, but that's just something I wanted to make sure attention was brought to. And especially because we are hoping to really start revving up the work again with that project now that the weather is nice and that we can actually train volunteers to move through the visual assessment. So I'm anticipating that they're going to have more money that they'll be invoicing in the near future.
Great. So question for you, you noted that we don't need to do it tonight. So I would say let's, let's plan on having it as an agenda item next meeting if we're still not we've gotten paid. But are, the trouble with reimbursement is this just a paperwork sort of regular delay or is there something substantive there?
The, I was waiting, I was working with Paula to get the, the invoice of the, of ASA's first invoice that we paid to include in the documentation. So she gave that to me now. So it's, it's just kind of a timing thing of whether or not they're going to say we, we checked all the boxes of all the stuff we needed to submit. So unfortunately, because this is still our first time getting reimbursement, I have no idea about timing on it and I don't want to necessarily hold up the project because of that. So, but yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll push that to next week, but I did want to make sure everyone was aware of it. I do however, need a decision made about 18 Van Horn. So 18 Van Horn is the property that has been impacted by the expansion of the ML7 parking lot. We've been working diligently with ML7's engineer Gilmore and they've been trying to have Landtech, the construction firm, fix the issue because part of the issue was due to them not following the plans. However, they're now starting to get some pushback about wanting additional compensation and the homeowners are getting weary. And they have asked if the borough would be willing to write a notice of violation, which would then start a clock that if ML7 doesn't meet that clock, then we have the rights to levy fines. So I need permission from the borough to move, to take that step and write that notice.
David, would it be appropriate? I would benefit from some history on this issue because I was not around when this initially happened and I'd be curious to get Liz or Matt, whoever the right person is, perspective on the background.
Yeah, I think it's a good way to go. It's been a while with this one. So Liz, if you'd take a couple of minutes and bring us all up to speed.
Yes, I will. I will do my best. So we were first notified in October of 2020 by the homeowner that they had noticed some trees had fallen along the creek behind their property and they were concerned that the new outfall that had been placed to convey the stormwater associated with the parking lot expansion was causing erosion problems. And they were very correct. I went out and did a site inspection myself and saw it. And so we immediately reached out to ML7 whose Nipte's permit had not been closed yet from the expansion project. And we told them that we would not write off that their project was ready to be closed out until this was addressed. So they went out in December and did some stabilization work. It wasn't quite enough. They went back out again in January and did more. They felt confident that they had been able to properly redirect things, but that they were not going to do any of the stabilization effort until the springtime and the growing season that, because if they were to plant anything in the winter, it wouldn't stay and it wouldn't grow. So we are now at the point where they said that they were going to start work. Work has not started because Landtech is refusing to do so because they want extra compensation. ML7 is of the belief that, no, you are the reason why this happened. This is on you. And so now they're kind of in their own internal battle. And so we have not gotten a timeline yet about when they're going to actually go out and do the work. Meanwhile, more trees have fallen. So it, it's a problem. It doesn't need, need to be dealt with.
And just to put for me, who is who, Landtech is the subcontractor that's actually
That actually did the work that ML7 employed, yes.
And who is ML7?
ML7 is the company that owns the parking lot. They're, they're just who we've been dealing with, but this is the lot that's behind the vault.
Behind, behind the tannery.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, gotcha.
For Liz or Paula, do we, is there still money in escrow related to this project?
I don't know what the escrow balance is, but I know that we have been putting our time towards it, but I'm pretty sure they haven't replenished it anytime recently.
Okay. All right. I mean, it sounds like it's, it's an issue, right, between subcontractor and ML7 at this point, but we do have a role to play in it. I mean, do we see any reason, I guess this might be a lucky question, is there anything that we could be, should be concerned about here before moving forward with something like this?
Yeah, I guess my comment would be that if council wants to proceed with considering some notice of violation, that you just make it subject to our review because we haven't really taken a look at this yet. So that, that would be my suggestion if you want to move forward at this time.
Yeah, that would make sense. Most likely what I'm, what I'm seeing is we would be quoting the stormwater ordinance. That is what's currently being violated.
All right. So given all that, and again, right, if this originally traces to an issue where work was not done according to the plan, that piece at least is somewhat clear cut. So is there a motion to send the notice of violation subject to review from the solicitor?
So moved.
Second.
My motion was made by Mr. Ross and seconded by Ms. Seville Morris. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? I see Ms. Permar. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think Liz is being very generous. I, I have been back there. I really highly suggest that council members walk back there and see the situation for themselves. You have a bank that looks like it's about to collapse. You have people's homes there. I lived on Brock I lived on Brock Creek, and I told you before, in one night, twenty feet of my property was gone and part of the Yardleyan parking lot. It is a really serious issue. She's brought it up several times at other meetings, and it really, I think. Needs to be looked at because there are homes there and Silver Lake Creek is back there. You've got the golf course waterfall. That looks unstable. It really, to me, looks like a very serious situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'd seen that. I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries six to zero. Back to you, Liz.
Awesome, thank you. Um and then the next one, um this is something that is different from the um report that I submitted and that you all have in front of you. And this is in regards to eighty-five West Afton. Uh we just received a copy yesterday. From DEP that um a complaint was filed. They went out and they discovered that. Earth disturbance activities were occurring on the lot. Um and right now, we've only received a subdivision application from them, not even land development. So they have no permits, no nothing. And um we they were starting work. So um right now, we are trying to figure out. How you guys want us to proceed with trying to make sure that no work continues. Um is that something that is within Wes's purview? Or should we be requesting more money for the escrow? Because right now, we just got their third submission. For the subdivision, and we are already out of the escrow funds from what our initial permitting fee is. For subdivisions, so we've already exhausted the the initial fifteen hundred. So at this point, there's not necessarily funds for us to charge any effort against if we were to have one of our inspectors periodically make sure no work is occurring.
Alright, um. I mean, it sounds like this is probable. I'm not sure. Maybe Paula or Wes, you can chime in how we've handled situations like this in the past, but I. It sounds to me this is something we could at least try to handle in-house first. Um we send them a notice that at least says, hey, you don't have permits. You need to stop working until you get the proper approvals. If it goes beyond that, uh you know, there's probably a series of actions we could take. But where are we in terms of that? Has anything been sent to them already?
I don't believe so. We literally just found out this yesterday.
Okay.
Has anyone had any conversations with them? Because it's pretty, I have just recently been by there. It's a pretty extensive thing they're doing, whatever they're doing, I would think. I'm just curious if anyone has had any conversations with them.
Uh we've had conversations with their plan preparer about the subdivision plan, but they again, like, it's just a subdivision that we've received, no land development, so.
I see.
Had no idea about what their ultimate plans are. So it's it's quite wild that they have started work.
And the whole thing is bare, like it's, you know, I mean, if you look at the picture on Google Maps versus what it looks like now, it's. Not unrecognizable. So just want to point it out.
Yeah, so we are not clear when the work started. We do know that the um DEP inspection occurred on March twenty-second.
Liz, what why was there a DEP inspection? What triggered that? I'm just curious how this even.
A resident complaint. Somebody called DEP and they came out.
And DEP is environmental protection?
Yes, the Department of Environmental Protection. And so when they get calls like that, uh that gets sent through the local conservation district. So somebody from Bucks County Conservation District emailed and filled out the DEP inspection form, and we just received a copy of it yesterday.
So DEP has no real enforcement action. They're sort of a, we agree there's a problem, they notify us. And then it's up to us to take action. Is that how the I just don't not familiar with the process?
Uh it's twofold. So if DEP gets notified again and stuff is continued on, they can levy fines directly themselves. Um but yes, as us being the borough, we do have a responsibility to also enforce our own ordinances. Um at this point, with what they've done is just grading, we don't have a grading ordinance, so it's. It's a little bit wonky of what we would enforce, but they don't have a building permit. They don't have an ENS permit. Um they have none of the things that they're they're supposed to have to to be doing any of this work.
Got it.
Alright, um I mean, I guess it it sounds like. We've got to send a notice. Some uh it might be that should come from Borough Hall.
David, I'll take care of that in the morning.
Perfect. And then, you know, certainly if you need to bring in the solicitor on any technicalities to make sure we get the language right, let's go ahead and do that. Um but it sounds to me that's a good place to start. You know, if it continues, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Alright, and I am seeing a couple of public comments on this. Um so let's try to move through quick. We don't have a vote up, so. Um let's just do a minute each. We'll start with uh Susan Taylor. I see your hand.
Um the contractor having, we live on the street. The contractor hasn't done anything for probably two weeks. The immediate concern um would be soil erosion and sedimentation control. The entire site is disturbed, and there are no measures in place. So that would lead me to want to take rather quick action. To um someone surely called DEP probably because of that. So.
Yeah, I would suggest, Paula, that what in your letter, you say stop work, but that they also have to implement ENS measures to to contain. This the disturbance, so they need to have perimeter controls to make sure that when it does rain, none of that runoff leaves the site.
Thank you. And I see a hand from Ms. Perlmutter.
Thank you. I just would like to follow up. This is the perfect example of what I was saying at the beginning of the meeting. We have a code enforcement officer. He has a vehicle. Why does it get to this point? Before anybody does anything? I mean, isn't that why we have a code enforcement officer to notice these things? Um it this is what I'm always saying that you disregard.
Thank you. Um alright, uh Bucky, is this something we need a formal motion on or is sort of the general consensus here sufficient?
No, I don't think a formal note uh motion is necessary. This is an administrative action. Uh it sounds like council has given um. Direction to the administration to take action. And could someone just mention the address again? I I didn't catch that.
Eighty-five West Afton.
Eighty-five West Afton, thank you.
Correct.
Alright, so that item is closed. Is anything else?
Not in general updates. Everything else is what you guys received in my report.
Alright, sounds good. So before we move on, quick council, any questions on general report? Alright, I'm seeing none there. Move on into the project updates.
Alright, so for Maine and Afton, uh we finally received um payroll from Armor and Sons for the last bit of work that they had. And it does seem like there is a a remaining amount that needs to be paid for the Maine and Afton intersection, so we will be processing that. And um council can expect to see that um prior to the next meeting, and you'll have to vote on approving that last release. Um for Mary Yardley Bridge Replacement, we're kind of in a holding pattern. We're just waiting to get Pindi approval before we can submit. The permits, doing everything we can on that front. Um the Pico property, we're at a point where there is no point in submitting for this current round of grants. Without the sales agreement. We're gonna be at the bottom of the pile. We're not gonna be competitive. I don't think it's worth us spending the money to submit an application this round. Um that being said, I don't think that's the end of the world, where no rush to have that property or do anything with it, and. You know, nobody's gonna buy it. They can't develop it. So I I think. Um I'm disappointed that things have not moved forward with Pico to get to that point, but. We have a whole another year for this grant to open up again next year.
And we're just waiting on Pico for that, the response? Just is there is there anything we can do to ask them to respond?
I know David has reached out to the representatives to try and get them get involved, but I mean, until. They come back to us with an agreement, there's I I don't know what else we can do. I have some personal contacts at Pico that I could try. And see if they'd be willing to enter into the fray, but yeah.
I mean, I just wonder, sometimes these things wind up on a desk, and it's just low priority, and it could sit there for like five years. So I'm just wondering if like, you know, we could find out at least when they. What kind of timeframe we're looking at, you know, just kind of remind them every so often.
Breathtaking Paula and telling her, oh, this week, next week, the end of another one.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's still con continuous communication.
Yes, Paula does regularly.
Great, okay. Sounds good.
Um and then last, um we've got the North Main sidewalk. So it looks like Pendot finally got their act together and have been talking about our phase one project that we have been waiting to close out, but they were being sticklers about the fact that. We did not complete the original HOP for phase one because we didn't get all the way out to where that ramp was. But now that we have um almost gotten our current HOP, which includes that ramp that was supposed to be done. They have now asked for a formal letter of commitment from the Borough on Borough Letterhead. Um I spoke with the uh Grant Coordinator, Chris Bergman, earlier this afternoon, actually. And he's gonna be sending me some documentation about what they expect to see in that letter, and. Once they approve that, we should be able to close it out and get the final um disbursement and be done with that. So the grant itself expires on June eleventh, but then you have an additional nine months to get through all the paperwork, but I'm hoping we can just. Quickly close this out in the next few months and and be done with it. Um but with regards to phase two, we are in the process of dealing with the utility pole relocations. Um a firm that Pico has hired is supposed to be doing field work this week. Identifying all the trees that will need to be removed to accommodate the relocation of the poles. Um and Paula and I discussed that the Borough would like the opportunity to use their own tree guy instead of. Um paying Pico for their person, so we're gonna have them mark the trees so that um we can get our own internal estimate for this effort. And I think that that's the the major thing. So unless anyone has any questions about any of the individual projects, that that wraps me up.
Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on next, uh Ms. Johnson for manager's report.
I just wanted to let everybody know that our audit is done, and we've received a great clean audit. If anybody wants a copy of it, let me know, but I did include it in a packet as well. The chairlift is has been installed at Borough Hall, so that I'm happy to report that as well. Apparently, we have a goose invasion down at Fitzgerald Field, so I'm gonna be checking into some of those fake coyotes. To see how much they are since we're actively having a Girl Scout camp there this year and some other events. I don't want everybody walking around in goose poop. Um and then one, two items I would like your direction on. One was the roof down at the annex. We received three bids. They were, we didn't have to do a formal bidding process due to the amount that it was anticipated to be. The lowest bidder came in around sixteen thousand dollars and up. So I wanted your permission to move forward, to go ahead and start the work on the annex to get that secured and sealed up. I think it really needs to be done to further, to stop any further damage. So. If um it's okay, I would like to move forward with that, and in your packets, all the bids were in there, and I hope everybody had a chance to review them, if anybody has any questions.
Just the the one that says eighteen three nine seven forty, is that one that was rejected? Is that?
That's that was the highest. I went in the order.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. There are more behind the other bids are behind it. I see.
And then the next bid was sixteen three, and then the lowest bid was fifteen. They were really, they were close, fifteen one eighty.
And and the sixteen three was a better uh contractor than the fifteen? Is that? Can you just tell us what made you choose that one?
It was lowest bidder.
Oh, okay, this is fifty.
Because by Borough Code, I checked with Bucky that we have to go with the lowest bidder.
Oh, we have to, I see.
Unless there's something in the bid that disqualifies them.
Okay.
Right, so lowest qualified and responsible bidder is the language of.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
For that case, this is just clarify, this is KPI two enterprises. That's the.
Yes, sir.
That's the low. Okay, and do you have, sorry, I see them itemized on here. Do you have that total handy again?
For KPI, it was fifteen one eighty.
Alright, so the motion I believe we are looking for uh would be. To award this project to KPI two enterprises in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for repair of the roof at the annex. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Mr. Curtin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Do we have any comments or questions from council on this item?
Yeah, just clarifying that this is um a budgeted project that we actually uh put off last year. Um we we cut this from the budget last year to try to um make it through our first COVID year without a huge budget deficit. So this is definitely passed due. The the roof has been patched a few times, but it this is budgeted.
I agree. I also think this is important to do now before the expense becomes significantly larger. Um I think it was appropriate to push it off last year for all the obvious reasons, but I'm concerned that if we don't take care of this. Now or soon, it'll be much more expensive going forward, so I think it's a good use of funds, and as Councilwoman Thompson said, it's budgeted.
Hundred percent agreed on that. I'm glad we're taking care of our properties.
Okay, and then one more item. I'll go real quick. Oh, I'm sorry.
So to round that out, do we, um I think we had comments from council, but do you have any comments from the public on that issue? And I see a hand from Mr. Perella.
Yeah, so you know, I gave you a quote on that project. I just want to say that the. It was, you know, the specifications were very vague on that particular issue. Um and I thought maybe, and I don't, I don't, I should think you should go with the low bidder. I mean, it's a fair process, but the specifications were a little bit vague. So it was repaired dormers, but how did the dormers get repaired? What materials are gonna be used? So it was a little bit vague, and I think that maybe it could have been. Um specified a little bit better. I don't know who did it.
The same specs were sent to every contractor.
Okay. But there's not specific.
Who makes the specs?
Um myself and Ken Smith went through the building to write everything down that was needed to be done.
I'm just, I'm just putting my two cents in. That's all.
Carl, as a resident and actively involved uh person on our, you know, boards and commissions, would you be willing to to write up something about how you think the process could be refined in the future? I'm sure we would be happy to receive uh that that feedback.
Um yeah, I I mean, it just, it it's not a big job, but there's just, there's just no specifications. There's. Repair, what needs to be repaired, to what degree? Um facial boards cap, what facial boards get capped? I guess it was just the side ones. Um that's all. Just a little bit, just a little bit vague.
So like as a as a contractor, basically, when you see something vague, you probably would be uh moved to. You know, include for all possibilities, so make your your uh estimate larger. Is that kind of? Is that a fair?
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, I'm I'm just.
Thank you for pointing that. Yeah, no, it's it's helpful because it makes a lot of sense, and I think if you wouldn't mind, like, writing back just some comments on that, and and Paula. For you and Ken in the future to just, you know, take that into consideration. I think that'd be great because then we could get lower bids. If they know what they're bidding on better.
Lower bids are good. Uh I see hand from Ms. Perlmutter.
Um yes, I would like to suggest that um maybe you postpone this and put it out to bid again with more specifics. So that you can get um a more fair opportunity. Um I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but it seems like um. We do have a a resident who is a contractor. I know Paula's not a contractor, and. I don't, I thought Ken was a landscaper, so I don't know how the two of them came up with these specifications. Um so maybe. Um, so maybe since you're all kind of agreeing that it might not have been done as accurately as possible. That you postpone this and put it out to bid again with more accurate specifications. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Alright, I don't see any more public comment on this, so I'll turn it back over to council. Um, any further comments or potential amendments in light of the suggestions?
Just qualifying that I don't think it's appropriate to have somebody who bid on the product uh, on the project draft the grant or the project proposal for us, but we are very interested in having his feedback, feedback for the future. I think the quotes were all so close within a thousand dollars of each other that there must have been some level of specificity in the project proposal.
I'm just thinking for future projects, and maybe this is a, a Bucky question. We have the, the process here, you know, if I'm a home, homeowner or business owner and I want my roof fixed, I bring them in and they look at it. And they make their own uh, you know, estimate. But in this case, because we have to send it out to them. We have to do something, we're not qualified in. So is there a way that we can send out something that includes an inquiry for them to come and check it out? And then give us a bid? Is there, is there a way to structure it so that we don't have to spec something we really don't know about?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, you know, it depends on the process. Here you didn't have a formal advertising uh, with uh, you know, meetings with potential bidders in advance. Or pre-qualifications or things of that nature, because the job was relatively small. So you know, you wouldn't want to spend a lot of resources developing real detailed specs and having a real detailed process. Or something that, you know, is, you know, fifteen thousand dollar job. So you have to balance all of that. Um, you know, given the circumstances of the specific project that you're looking at.
So, but so can we just send it out and say, you know, come have a look and then give us the estimate? Would that be simple?
Provide opportunities for people to, you know, inquire and ask questions about the specifications. That's a process. And then, you know, you can amend the specs and provide all potential bidders with what the amendment is, if you're answering questions, what the answer is, you know, that sort of thing. So there is, there are things that can be done.
And I personally walked through with one of the contractors through this whole building. Um, Ken Smith walked through with another one and the other one went on his own. So everybody went to this building, they walked around and looked at and saw what needed to be done.
Okay, I didn't get that part. That makes a lot more sense. I was wondering how they could bid on it blind, so that explains it.
Was not blind.
Yeah, Paula, can you clarify? I think you said, I should know this, I don't. This is below the threshold where we even need to solicit multiple bids, correct? We've chosen to do so, and now that we've chosen to do so, we're going to take the lowest bid and that's, you know, per Bucky's comment, consistent with our appropriate behavior in our Borough Code. But you know, this isn't even of a magnitude where we would need to do that. Like, yeah, my perspective is, I think Councilwoman Thompson made some very good points. The bids came in very consistent. Um, you know, Paula just confirmed people had ample opportunity to, to visit and inspect. And I actually think, you know, it would look, I think we open ourselves to more criticism of deciding that we're not going to do it after all that. Because, you know, potentially we want to give it to somebody in the borough. And, and that to me would be a cronyism type thing that I don't want to open that door. I'd rather just, let's just move forward.
Right, and just to clarify for council, the, the bid threshold for twenty twenty-one is twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars. So anything that you, you know, could conceivably be above that, you have to go through the formal advertising, formal bidding process. If it's over, I think it's eleven thousand is the second threshold. Uh, if, if you think it's going to be over eleven thousand dollars, then you're, you, you need to get at least three written proposals in some fashion. It could be, you know, by an email or, you know, phone call with a memo or, or whatever. Uh, so it sounds like this was even more, uh, there was more involvement in, in this process than what was required.
Alright, great. Do you have any final comments on? Alright, seeing none. I will call the question. All those in favor of awarding this project to KPI Enterprises signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six two zero. Right back to you, Paula.
And I'll make this quick. Um, I did get some quotes for the municipal trash cans. We do need nine or ten of them to be replaced in town. So I got um, through the consortium, two trash cans and I did send this in the packet. One was nine hundred dollars and twenty-five cents per and the other one is six hundred and forty-five per. They did check into the composite trash cans. Um, this company felt they do supply them, they would be cheaper. But they would also need to be reinforced because they tend to warp and fall apart. So they kind of directed us away from, from them because it would cost more in the long run and they wouldn't last as long. So um, it's up to you guys, if you want to vote on something like this tonight, or if you want to see more proposals, more designs, that's fine as well. But I just want to get us talking on this stuff. So the spring, summer season's upon us. We have people walking in town and our trash cans need to be replaced. So either we can vote on something like this tonight, or if you want me to get additional quotes in other places, I can do that as well. But it seems to be for good, solid ones that are going to last a good long time. This is going to be the price range we're, we're looking at.
Oh, and you said, these are recommended through the borough's consortium?
Yes.
And then is, it seems like a pretty common item. Is this something that you've looked at? Like, I forget, is it Co-Stars?
Co-Stars, yes.
Where we would find something like this? Did you, did you look there to see, and prices consistent?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask that we just get like an opinion, maybe just a Harb opinion on what is the mo- the mo- the least? I mean, I think you don't want a garbage can, a trash can to attract attention, but there must be some sense they have of, you know, get a black one, get a green one. You know?
Not blue?
Blue, actually, well, maybe the one that's in that spot should be blue.
I had to, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, there's, well, there's many different colors. There's black, there's green.
Yeah.
All kinds of different colors. So if you want Harb to look at them for a color, that's fine.
I don't mean do a whole hearing on it. I just mean like send it to somebody and get, you know, an opinion of, oh, this is the best shape. Other than that, I'm good, you know?
Okay. Whatever. It's not a super rush, but like I said, now's the season. We want to get this stuff out there.
And a bunch of them were missing, right? Weren't they like?
Yeah. Yeah, supposedly we had like fifteen, twenty of them and then we're down to nine or ten. So I think some have gotten hit and weren't replaced in the past.
Okay.
Do we have a record of where they all were? Would we want to replace them?
Um. I think we might, I think we do have a record.
I don't.
Yeah, and not, but I don't know if we really need fifteen or so. I don't know. Something to think about though. But I think if we get these key ones done sooner than later, it'll be better.
So we're looking for, for ten?
Yes.
Looking at right now? Okay, so ten at the, the cheaper item is sixty-five, six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars total.
Correct.
Uh, here a motion, manual to that effect, or the table to hold off.
Why don't we increase it a little bit, just in case, you know, there's like, I don't know, six seventy-five or something? In case there's like a design from Harb and it's twenty bucks more. So, so it doesn't have to come back to us is what I'm saying.
Alright, let's uh.
You want to put a D N E on it?
As, as suggested, do a do not exceed of an even.
There you go.
You're our, you're our budget. Seven thousand sound good.
Sure, yeah, again, something that we have been discussing for, for two years now, replacing the trash can. So I think definitely warranted.
Alright, so someone could make that in a motion? Anyone? Not all at once.
Go for it, Ari. You feel passionate about these trash cans, I feel.
Well, you know, little things make a big difference. Um, so I would like to make a motion to uh, replace ten trash cans. At a cost not to exceed seven thousand dollars total. How's that?
Second.
Alright, sounds good. A motion was made by Mr. Finer, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Alright, seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six zero. And Paula, was that any other items on your report tonight?
That is, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, next on our agenda is solicitor's report. Mr. Klafter.
Uh, I'll keep things moving. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Uh, item twelve, mayor's report, Mayor Harding.
Thank you. No report this evening.
Number thirteen, council members' report. We'll begin with Mr. Curtin.
No report, David. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Siegel Morris?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
I like where we're headed here. Uh, myself, I have no report additionally. Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Uh, no report. I did ask that the item under discussions be added to the agenda about reopening plans. Um, given the hour, probably not pertinent that we discuss that this evening. But I, I did want to offer up general government to take that on if we, to come up with some metrics for when we'll return to Borough Hall. And give our committees and commissions the green light to return to Borough Hall if, if everyone is okay with general government taking late on that.
Sounds good to me. Any objections to that? It's all yours.
Well, thanks. Nothing else.
Alright, Mr. McCann is not here tonight, so Mr. Finer.
No report, thank you.
Okay, uh, so we just heard from Ms. Thompson that we are going to uh, skip over that discussion item that was scheduled tonight. And instead that will be handled through general government. Uh, so unless there are any other items from council. We do have an executive session scheduled. Uh, there will be no vote calling the executive session. Uh, so is there a motion from council to adjourn to executive session?
So moved, or, or second, either or.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the executive session about?
Uh, for legal discussion.
Another lawsuit?
For legal discussion.
Is the borough being sued again?
For legal discussion. That's where we're ending it. Thank you.